All right, good morning, everybody. We're gonna go ahead and get started with today's meeting. I just want to thank everybody for being here today. I hope all of you had a restful Memorial Day weekend despite the bad weather we had in the Carolinas. Just want to ask that all of you be patient as I go through this. I missed at least two months now. I was out with COVID last month, so that's why I couldn't be here. Don't worry, I don't have it anymore. So you don't have to worry about I'm getting sick in here today. But, okay, so we'll go ahead and get started. The May 30th, 2023 meeting of the Charlotte Zoning Board of Adjustment is now in session. I am Douglas Wilson, Chair. Also sitting on today's board is Kevin Shea, Marshall Williamson, Hamilton Court, and Amy Sun. Also present are Lisa McCarter, Planning Project Manager, Solomon Fortune, Zoning Administrator, Tariq Hagler-Grey, Senior Assistant City Attorney, Jill Sanchez Myers, also Senior Assistant City Attorney, Terry Edwards, clerk to the board, and Candy Thomas is our court reporter. I would like to start by acknowledging that we are conducting this meeting in person. This is the fifth in-person meeting in 2023 of the Charlotte Zoning Board of Adjustment, and I would like to ask for your patience today as we proceed. There may be slight delays as we transition between speakers, participants, and presentations. The Zoning Board of Adjustment is a quasi-judicial board that is governed by the North Carolina General Statute and the Charlotte zoning ordinance. We conduct evidentiary hearings on requests for variances and appeals, among other requests. Before we begin to hear the cases on today's agenda, I would like to provide some important information on the steps that were taken to ensure that each party's due process rights are protected as we proceed. A notice of this meeting was provided to the applicants and the public in several ways. The notice of today's hearing was mailed to property owners within 300 feet of each subject property and notified the property owners of the in-person meeting. Notification letters were also stated to contact the city immediately if there were any objections to the cases being heard in today's agenda. Notice was also provided by placing signs on each property and by publishing notices on the city's website. The notice for today's meeting contained information about means by which the public can access today's proceedings. Finally, any individual wishing to participate in today's evidentiary hearings are required to sign up prior to today's proceedings. This information was also included on the board's website. Application for variance from the regulations in the zoning ordinance. Application for variance from the regulations in the zoning ordinance, the order of the recommendation agenda will be as follows. The zoning administrator or zoning staff will identify the case and recommend approval of the variance with any recommended conditions based on specific reasons. The chairperson will ask if anyone wants to speak in opposition. If there is such a person, then the case will be moved to the regular agenda and will be heard at a later date. The chairperson will ask if the board has questions for staff or if there is any reason the board wishes to move the case to the regular agenda. The chairperson calls for a motion and a second to approve the variance. The chairperson will hold a roll call vote. The order of the regular agenda will be as follows. All parties who plan to give testimony, pro or con, must be sworn in. A zoning staff member will explain why a permit was denied or why a variance is requested. The board may question the staff member, and then the applicant may question the staff member. The applicant presents their testimony for this case. The board may question the applicant, and the staff member may question the applicant. The applicant may present sworn witnesses, but they'll be subject to questioning. Other parties wishing to speak, pro or con, will be given reasonable time to present sworn testimony. The staff and then applicant will be given an opportunity for rebuttal, and the chairperson calls for a motion and a second to approve the variance. The chairperson will hold a roll call vote. After hearing each case, the board will review each case and render a decision. This is usually done in closed deliberations after hearing each regular agenda case. However, the board may elect to take up to 30 days to render a decision. You may remain present during deliberations, or you may call the zoning staff after the session to receive the decision of the court. All exhibits must remain with the board. Exhibits were recommended to be provided to the clerk no later than 12:00 PM on Monday, May 29. If your case is not appealed to Superior Court after 30 days, you may pick them up, or they will be destroyed. If you feel there is a conflict of interest of any member of the board or any association that would prejudice your case, please let it known at the start of your case. The board is acting in a quasi-judicial capacity for purposes of this hearing and can only accept sworn testimony. While the board will not specifically exclude hearsay evidence, it's only given limited weight. The North Carolina State Bar has issued an advisory opinion that it is the unauthorized practice of law of an individual who is not an active member of the bar to appear for another or otherwise assist or represent another at a quasi-judicial hearing on zoning and land use matters. All applicants should have been provided with a copy of that advisory opinion as part of the application package. If you are a property owner or a non-lawyer here on behalf of a property owner and have not received a copy of that opinion, please notify the clerk the documents will be provided to you. If, as a result of this advisory opinion, the applicant would like to request a continuance of his or her case, the board will consider such requests at the start of that case. Appeal from the board is to the Mecklenburg County Superior Court. You have 30 days from the date of the board's written decision in which to appeal in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 160D-405D. In order to receive a written copy of the decision, any aggrieved party must file a written request for a copy of the board's decision by filling out the form which must be filed with the board's clerk or chairperson at the time of the hearing of the case. So we will hear, well, actually, the agenda is going to be a little bit changed up today. So the first thing that we're going to do is look at the appeal, and I believe that that is going to be continued for another, what, 30 days? Where's David at? 60 days? Okay.
60 days.
60 days, okay. All right. So that, then, by the way, that's case number 2022-051. And so I think that we need to make a motion to move that. All right. So is there a motion to move case number 2, to, let me rephrase that. Is there a motion to provide a continuation, case number 2022-051, to the June meeting?
Motion to continue that case to the June meeting.
Okay. All right, a motion was made by Mr. Williamson?
Sorry. I believe, well, just wanted to clarify, the request was for 60 days, but the June meeting would be in about 30 days.
Thank you, thank you for notifying that. So that would put us in, what, July? I believe it is? Okay. So if Mr. Williamson could restate?
Motion to move it 60 days.
Okay. Motion's been moved by Mr. Williamson. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Shea. Now we move to a roll call vote. Mr. Shea?
Shea, yes.
Okay. Mr. Williamson?
Williamson, yes.
Mr. Court?
Court, yes.
Ms. Sun?
Sun, yes.
Okay, Wilson, yes. Okay. So that case has been moved to our July meeting. Next, on the recommended agenda, we have case number 2023-011, also represented by Mr. David Murray. Mr. Murray, I was informed by Mrs. McCarter that you may be looking at doing the same with this case as well?
Members of the board, there is a rezoning that's been filed. Part of the rezoning. Some changes recently. Originally, when this variance was filed, we were asking for a variance. Your parents thought that has been withdrawn. Also showed a three-story building. It's also named. And as a result of some of the comments that we've got back from CDOT, they're asking for additional. Home road. That is necessitating two, potentially two additional variances that are going to have to be added in for existing structures. So we're asking for a 30-day continuance so that we can get everything adjusted and get that. Side plan. And in that way, everybody can just look at.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Murray. With that said, is there a motion to provide a continuation for case number 2023-011 for 30 days, which would be our June meeting?
Court moved to continue for 30 days.
Okay. Motion's been made by Mr. Court. Is there a second?
Second, Shea.
Okay, there's been a second by Mr. Shea. Now we're going to move to a roll call vote. Mr. Shea?
Shea, yes.
All right, Mr. Williamson?
Williamson, yes.
Mr. Court?
Court, yes.
Ms. Sun?
Sun, yes.
Wilson, yes. Okay. So we don't have a agenda, right? This is all?
Right. Okay, it's 27, 28.
Okay, all right, okay. Okay, continuing along. Our first case of the morning will be case number 2023-027. And Terry is passing out information on this case. So if the board members want to just take a few minutes to review it, you're more than welcome to. And then I'll let Lisa know when we're ready.
Anybody up here for?
And Terry, is anybody here in opposition to this case?
No chair.
Okay. All right, Lisa, you may proceed with your presentation.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. Has the witness been sworn? Has she been sworn yet?
I'm sorry?
Has she been sworn?
Yes, got you. Like I said, it's been a couple of months, so.
Welcome.
Okay. Okay, Lisa, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in a matter of hand? Okay, thanks a lot.
All right, this is a variance request from the proposed right-of-way. Exhibit one is a vicinity map of the property. Exhibit two is a zoning map. The property is zoned R8 single-family. Exhibit number three is an aerial map. Exhibit four is a close-up aerial map. Exhibit five is background. The lot is a through lot, which requires a setback along both the front and the rear street. The front of the duplex is oriented towards Julia Malden Place, and the rear is oriented towards Parkwood Avenue, which is a major arterial street. Since it's a major arterial, there's a 40-foot proposed right-of-way required for Parkwood, measured from the street center line, and a 20-foot transitional setback measured from the proposed right-of-way. The plot plan submitted for the duplex on the property only showed the 20-foot rear setback, but didn't show the proposed right-of-way or transitional setback, and the duplex was constructed as submitted. Exhibit number six is the variance request. The duplex encroaches into the proposed right-of-way and transitional setback, and the applicant is requesting a 21-foot variance from the proposed right-of-way for compliance. So over to your left is showing the existing encroachment area, and to your right is showing the requested variance. Exhibit number seven is variance criteria, and all the following must be met. Unnecessary hardship would result from strict application of the ordinance. It shall not be necessary to demonstrate that in the absence of the variance, no reasonable use can be made of the property. The hardship results from conditions that are peculiar to the property. The hardship did not result from actions taken by the applicant or property owner, and the requested variance is consistent with the spirit, purpose, and intent of the zoning ordinance. Exhibit number eight is considerations. Staff finds the request meets the standards for granting a variance. Strict application of the ordinance would require a portion of the existing structure to be removed. The hardship results from conditions peculiar to the property. The 31-foot front setback on the 1989 subdivision plat supersedes the required 20-foot R8 setback and decreases the permitted building depth. The established front setback is approximately 36 feet, and that's 16 feet greater than the required 20-foot setback. The property is triangular and narrows towards the front setback, and there's a 10-foot drainage easement located along the right side of the property, and that decreases the permitted building width. The established rear setback is 25 feet, which is 5 foot greater and compliant with the standard 20-foot R8 setback for a through lot. Exhibit nine is considerations. The hardship did not result from actions taken by the applicant or the property owner because Birdco is the third owner of the property since July 31st, 2020, when permits for the existing duplex structure were issued. Birdco states they didn't know about the requirements for proposed right-of-way and transitional setback until they submitted a plat to create sublots and were made aware of the encroachments. Granting the variance will not adversely affect adjacent or contiguous properties or change the character of the area. Adjacent homes along Parkwood Avenue appear to be located within the proposed right-of-way and transitional setback. So you can see that the right-of-way of Parkwood is variable, and the existing homes that predate the ordinance are encroaching. Exhibit 10 is a photo of the property, and that's the end of my presentation. If you have any questions?
Does anybody from the board have any questions for Lisa?
Lisa, can we go back to the plot plan application? That is correct, then. Is that, is that what I'm hearing? That when they made that application, that 20-foot setback that the outline was correct?
So this was incorrect because it wasn't showing the proposed right-of-way and transitional setback?
Wasn't showing it, okay.
Yeah, so they only showed the 20-foot standard setback for the R8. So we approved it, and they built it as permitted.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Lisa from the board? All right. And again, you said there's nobody in opposition? All right. If there are no questions for Lisa, is there a motion to approve or deny the variance?
Motion to approve.
Okay. A motion has been made to approve the variance by Mr. Shea. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, second has been made by Mr. Court. Now we'll move into a roll call vote. Mr. Court?
Court, yes.
Okay, Mr. Williamson?
Williamson, yes.
Ms. Sun?
Sun, yes.
Mr. Shea?
Shea, yay.
Wilson, yes. All right. Now we're going to review finding facts and conclusions of law. Is there a motion to approve the finding facts and conclusions of law as written?
Move to approve the findings of fact and conclusions of law as written.
Okay, motion's been moved to approve the findings and facts and conclusions of law as written by Mr. Court. Is there a second?
Williamson, second.
All right, second by Mr. Williamson. Now we'll move to a roll call vote. Mr. Williamson?
Williamson, yes.
And Mr. Court?
Court, yes.
Ms. Sun?
Sun, yes.
Mr. Shea?
Shea, yay.
Wilson, yes. Our next case will be case number 2023-028.
This is a request for a variance from a rear yard, and I'll give you a minute to look over your findings.
Terry, is anybody here in opposition to this case?
No chair.
All right, Lisa, you may proceed.
Exhibit one is a vicinity map of the property. Exhibit two is a zoning map. The zoning is R15 PUD. It's a planned unit development. Exhibit number three is an aerial map of the property. Exhibit four is a close-up aerial map of the property. Exhibit five is background. The property is conditionally zoned, R15 PUD, and that's an old conditional zoning district. The lot is required to have two 55-foot rear yards shown on the approved subdivision plat. Since the 55-foot rear yard was the standard rear yard for R15 and not more restrictive, the applicant has the right to apply for a variance according to the code. Exhibit six is background. This is the 2023 survey showing the existing conditions. The property is currently compliant with the two rear yards with the exception of a small encroachment of a heated area over an unheated garage to the northwest. And so that's this property line. Also, the survey isn't oriented north, so. Exhibit number seven is the variance request. The applicants would like an addition on their home and are requesting a 25-foot variance from the 55-foot rear yard to the southeast. Exhibit number eight is variance criteria, and I won't go through them all again, but all must be met. Exhibit number nine is considerations. Staff supports the requested variance with applicant's proposed condition of approval that a hold be placed on the permit for the requested addition, prohibiting the final certificate of occupancy until the heated space over the garage that encroaches into the northeastern rear yard is brought into compliance. So they would bring this encroachment into compliance on the upper story. Exhibit number 10 is considerations. Unnecessary hardship would result from strict application of the ordinance since the lot has two rear yards. The current ordinance would only require one rear yard to the northeast because it's the farthest lot line from the street. Exhibit 11 is considerations. The hardship results from conditions that are peculiar to the property because this is the only property in the area with two rear yards, and the adjacent property to the southeast has a 30-foot rear yard along the same boundary. The front of the home faces a cul-de-sac, with the rear of the home facing the rear corner of the lot. The established front setback of 71 feet decreases the depth of the permitted building envelope, and there is a 20-foot public drainage easement along the northwestern property line, and that decreases the width of the permitted building envelope. Exhibit 12 is considerations. The applicant states that the addition couldn't be constructed to the rear of the home because of a covered patio and outdoor living area. The applicants provided an architectural rendering and stated the proposed location of the addition would allow it to be architecturally compatible with the home. Exhibit number 13 is considerations. The applicant's provided a certified master arborist assessment that states that the variance would allow all the trees on the property to remain with minimal impact, but building within the compliant building footprint towards the front, you can barely see it, but it's outlined right here, would cause the elimination of seven healthy mature trees ranging from 15 to 40 years old and have a significant impact on the landscape. The arborist included an aerial and survey of the negative impacts that building to the front of the home would have versus the minimal impact to the side. Exhibit number 14 is considerations. The hardship didn't result from actions taken by the applicant who purchased the property in 2020, and the home was already constructed. The variance is consistent with the intent of the ordinance, and granting the variance will not adversely affect adjacent or contiguous properties. The encroachment won't be easy to detect because of mature vegetation located along the eastern property boundary. The requested 30-foot rear yard would align with the 30-foot rear yard of the neighboring property to the south along the southeastern boundary. The applicant provided a letter from the Moorcroft Estates Architectural Review Committee in support of the variance. The applicant state the requested variance would provide reasonable accommodations and provided a doctor's note. Exhibit 15 is photos. This is the photo from the closest right-of-way and then a overhead of the home. And that's the end of my presentation, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Lisa. Does anybody from the board have any questions for Lisa?
It says in the findings of fact that they purchased in 2020. Is that correct? It looks like from the tax records, they purchased in '23 this year. I just wanted to clarify when they purchased.
If you'd like to ask the applicant?
I would have to swear to my man.
You need to take it off the recommendation agenda.
The only reason we're going to be asked to confirm the findings of fact?
Okay. Okay.
It's not a little better that we can do that because it's a loss.
Got you, I swear. Okay. All right, so it looks like Mr. Williamson's question is for the applicant, so I would have to swear the applicant in. Are you here today?
There you are.
Right. If you could, please, for the court reporter, please state your name and your address.
Sarah Beeson, 1420 East 7th Street, Charlotte, North Carolina, 28204.
Okay. And do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth in a matter of hand?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay, all right. Okay, Mr. Williamson, the name.
So the only question I had, it stated up there, they purchased in 2023.
Correct, yes, sir. They closed in March, I can remember the exact date, late 20s, I think, March 22nd, 23rd of 2023. And that's why the survey is also dated February 2023. It was right before the closing came in.
Can you put it after? If that sort of seems any of us have any questions for our group? All right, hearing none, thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Continuing on, does anybody else from the board have questions?
Okay. Hearing none, is there a motion to approve or deny the variance?
Motion to approve the variance.
All right, motion's been made to approve the variance by Mr. Court. Is there a second?
Second, Shea's second.
Okay, it's a second by Mr. Shea. Now we'll move to a roll call vote. Mr. Shea?
Shea, yay.
Okay, Mr. Williamson?
Williamson, yes.
Ms. Sun?
Sun, yes.
Mr. Court?
Court, yes.
Wilson, yes. Now we're going to review the finding facts and conclusions of laws. So it looks at number 26. I think we have to change to 2023. Okay. Is there any other place edits needed to be made? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the finding facts and conclusions of law with number 26 edited to reflect the current year?
Motion to approve the findings of fact has edited in number 26 to, from. Motion to approve the findings of fact as edited in number twenty six to, from two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty three.
Okay, uh, motion's been moved by Mr. Williamson. Uh, is there a second?
Shea, second.
Okay, uh, second by Mr. Shea. Now we move into a roll call vote. Uh, Mr. Shea?
Shea, yay.
Okay, uh, Ms. Sun?
Sun, yes.
Uh, Mr. Williamson?
Williamson, yes.
Uh, Mr. Court?
Court, yes.
Okay, Wilson, yes. Okay. Um, next on the agenda, uh, I say that we go ahead and approve the minutes, and then we have an open forum. Um, and that, is that open forum going to be led by Terry or is it by Jill or? It'll be led by you? Okay, great. All right, and, um, I think everybody should have a copy of the minutes. Okay, here they go, right here. And, um, I believe that, uh, Terry also, uh, sent, um, this out, uh, prior to our meeting. Does anybody, uh, have any or see any edits that need to be made in the, uh, rules? Um, you know, I, I wasn't at this meeting, so I really can't speak for it, but if there are any edits that you may see, the edits need to be made, um, please let us know. Okay, um, hearing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes from, um, the April meeting, April twenty twenty three meeting?
Court moved to approve the minutes.
Okay, motion's been moved to approve the minutes from April twenty eighth, twenty twenty three by Mr. Court. Is there a second? Okay, second by Mr. Shea. Moving to a roll call vote. Mr. Shea? Uh, Mr. Williamson?
Williamson, yes.
Uh, Mr. Court?
Court, yes.
Ms. Sun? Hey, Wilson, yes. Okay, uh, approval, minutes have been approved from April twenty eight, twenty twenty three. Now, my next question is, do we need to adjourn the meeting so we can go to the procedure since that's going to be?
No.
No, okay.
This is still a, a public meeting, open meeting, but it's moving into a different, um, a different phase of the meeting, I guess. Um, but the hearings are concluded at this time. So, and I'll go ahead. Do you mind if I get started or?
No.
Oh, okay, sure. Um, so, um, uh, today I just wanted to provide you, um, a written draft of the proposed rules of procedure for the U D O Board of Adjustment. Um, a, as you know, June first, the board, this board actually will just be renamed. Um, so this is not creation of a new board, um, but the zoning board of adjustment will now be renamed the U D O Board of Adjustment. Um, so, uh, several of my colleagues in the city attorney's office, um, have been uh, working to, uh, work together to, um, come up with some proposed rules, um, that would meet the needs not only of the board but of the, um, different staff, uh, administrative offices. So as you know, now more than just zoning is going to be coming before this board, so this board will be hearing things under the tree, what's currently the tree ordinance, but under the separate articles under the U D O concerning trees, flood plains, erosion control, post construction stormwater, uh, those kinds of, of things. So, um, today, this is just a written introduction, um, and you can feel free to ask any questions. I know you may not have had a chance to review it today, but, um, it would, will be on the agenda next month for you to vote on. Um, and any amendments can be made, you know, prior to its adoption. If you have any questions between now and then, you know, feel free to re-